Item number two, approval of minutes from previous meeting, the regular Tuesday, December fourteenth, and the special Tuesday, December twenty-first.
Make a motion to approve those amendments.
Second?
I'll say I'm on motion.
All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler? Motion carries. Item number three, claims and payroll.
Make a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second?
Thank you.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna move number five, discussion action employee health insurance, Josh Sherrick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, thank you for driving north here.
You bet. That time of year again, um, so I'm gonna have everybody grab the spreadsheet from your packets if you could.
We just got them, so we'll go over them with you.
Okay.
Nobody sped right in my, you know.
No worries. Um, you saying they didn't get that out ahead of time? So, uh, on the, if you look at that first page, uh, that's showing where we're at for two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we did have quite a few claims, uh, for last year, so we got quite a bit of a rate increase. Uh, it actually started, um, quite a bit higher than the, the sixty-two percent increase. We, I was able to actually get it down, um, to that. So, had to start looking at some other options, obviously, to try and, uh, lower it even further. So, we went, uh, I went back to, uh, some fully insured quotes. So, what the city is on now is what's called a level funded plan, so it's medically underwritten. Um, and claims are based on just your group. Uh, fully insured, it's back to, they don't, they don't ask any health questions, it's a community rating. Uh, so, we got some quotes from all those carriers, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield and UHC were not competitive. Uh, so I didn't even put them on there. Medica, uh, came back pretty well. Uh, we were kinda able to leverage those quotes with Allstate to try and get that down even further. Uh, so, what I am going to recommend is that we stick with Allstate. So, if you look, if you go to the second page of the spreadsheet, there's three different quotes there from Allstate. Uh, so that first one, on the far left, would be keeping the benefits exactly as they are now, so they're not having to, uh, raise deductibles or raise out-of-pocket maxes, keep the plan exactly the same. We're just switching from, uh, what's, what's called a PPO or a network plan to what is called a reference-based pricing plan. So, rather than, uh, having a network and having to go to, you know, an in-network doctor slash out-of-network, there are no networks. Uh, the plan just pays, uh, based off a percentage of the Medicare reimbursement rate. So, um, because it's a set rate, they're able to offer it at a lower premium. I have multiple groups on this type of plan, I have not had any issues with it. Um, and, you know, if we wanna go into that a little bit more, there are two other handouts, did they get these?
They're on the back.
Okay, yep. So, this goes just to a little bit more detail about how a reference-based pricing plan works. Um, if you look at this page right here with the yellow highlighting. Like I said, it's, it just based, it pays on the basis of, of the Medicare reimbursement rate. So, rather than, again, having a negotiated network rate when you go to your doctor or to your hospital, um, it pays in a percentage of that Medicare reimbursement rate. So, uh, the providers actually get paid instead of a couple months, they get paid within a couple of weeks. So, the process is a lot faster, which, and also around here, most of the providers are not charging outrageous rates to where they're gonna be taking a, a big haircut if they accept this Medicare reimbursement rate, so.
Kind of balance billing or?
So, I'm glad you said that. That is one issue that people bring up with reference-based pricing. Now, you can get a balance bill whether, on a network plan as well. You could potentially get a balance bill at any time. Um, there, with this payment system, there is the likelihood that you could get a, the likelihood has increased that you could get a balance bill. Uh, but Allstate has a guarantee inside their policy, which is why that's never scared me, of you'll never pay more than your deductible or out-of-pocket max. So, you're really not at any more of a risk than you would be on a network plan. Because as long as you, if you ever do get a balance bill, that's what this next sheet is. They have a number on the back of your card, you call that number, and as long as you let them negotiate it, they will either negotiate it away, which that's what normally happens.
And there's no network.
What's that?
And there's no network.
There's no networks. We have the only, the only, um, the, the only network is for prescriptions. So, Cigna would still be the, the pharmacy benefit manager, that wouldn't change. But as far as going to, uh, you know, your doctor or hospital, there's no network. They all get paid the same way. Well, it's kinda high level, um, but, like I said, with their guarantee of you, of that the members will never pay more than their deductible out of, or out-of-pocket max, I've never had an issue. So, like I said, I've had groups on it for years, um, and I've never even been made aware of anybody getting a balance bill, let alone it being an issue.
Our renewal, the, it's two ones, isn't it?
Correct, yep, February first.
Just getting this tonight. Uh, this information.
We, I, I've had the quotes for a while longer, so I guess I apologize if you didn't get them ahead of time. We, but, we, we've had them for, um, we're waiting for two other quotes about to come in. But Medica on their, the, so they also have plans like Allstate, both Medica and, um, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, but they both declined to quote based off the health history. So, those are the last two we're waiting to come in. Any questions on the difference between a network plan versus the reference-based pricing?
So, these three plans on the, that you're kinda proposing, what's the main differences between them?
So, the main difference, as you go to the right, is they're, they're just making some slight changes. So, the middle one, uh, it's going from a hundred percent coinsurance to ninety percent. So, you'll see, you've got the deductible stays the same with three and six, but the out-of-pocket max goes to four and eight instead of three and six. And then if you go over one more, the coinsurance, instead of being ninety-ten, goes to fifty-fifty.
Okay. And my understanding, this out-of, out-of-pocket max, we don't do like an eighty-twenty, seventy-thirty?
Not currently, so right, right now, once they hit the deductible, then everything starts getting covered at a hundred percent.
Did we quote it that way at all, or look into that?
So, that, so that's what, so that first one is exactly what it, what they have now. So, that would be no change other than switching from the network plan to reference-based pricing. So, deductibles and out-of-pocket maxes and coinsurance would all stay the same.
But did, we didn't look into changing anything just to see if we could lower this, these increases down?
Yeah, so, so, that, I did, so if you go over to, and we changed it to the ninety-ten coinsurance and the four and eight.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, yeah.
That is ninety-ten.
Yeah, exactly, then that drops it down to a fifteen percent increase.
I thought you just said it was, out-of-pocket max was eight grand.
So, yeah, so the coinsurance and the out-of-pocket, those are the only two changes. And then that's, and that's what you're seeing in, in the second column and in the third column.
Budget-wise, we did plan for a large increase. We knew last year, we thought we were gonna have one, we didn't. We did very well, two point six or something.
Yeah, it was, it was very low last year.
Um, so we, we kept it with this year, and actually, budget-wise, we're budgeted for thirty percent increase, so we could handle any one of these.
Obviously, that's kind of a big indicator on, on what you can do, is your, you know, what you can do with your budget, what fits in your budget. Um, you know, with that being said, you never know what's gonna happen from year to year. Obviously, we took a really big rate increase this year, we were able to get it down to a much lower by making a few changes. Um, you know, just once you start changing, you know, taking away benefits, going with higher deductibles, higher out-of-pocket maxes, uh, it's rare that those ever go back. Um, so, you know, if you can keep it in your budget and keep the same plan, you know, that's probably what I would recommend doing, 'cause there will come a time where, budget-wise, you don't have a choice, and you're, you're gonna have to start going with higher deductibles and out-of-pocket maxes.
So, when do we have to come up for renewal, is that right now?
Uh, it's February first is the renewal.
I kinda remember the last year, which last year, I mean, rate increase was minor.
Negative.
But we were still at the last minute, and then, I mean, we don't have a choice but to decide something now.
Yeah, if you had to, you could do a special session, um, you know. Like, I've, I've been talking with Jeremy a little bit on the rates, going back and forth, trying to, you know, do what we could do. Um, but, you know, there's only, again, there's only so much we can, we can do. So, you know, it's either Allstate or looking at switching to Medica, but there, the rate increases are gonna be, you know, even more. If you're trying to compare apples to apples as much as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just, it takes longer when you get the renewal, and you gotta do, 'cause we had to sudden, we had to have everybody do apps. So, by the time everybody gets the apps done, and they get sent off, and we get the back, like I said, we, I just, I got the last decision today from Medica that they weren't gonna give us a quote.
And then they left out an employee.
Do you need a motion?
I heard it, but I just needed you to say it a little louder.
Oh, I make a motion to do the Allstate ninety percent one, along the middle.
One second, all right. Any further discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Josh. Back to number four, Mayor, Julie. Happy New Year.
Our last, um, meeting was on December twenty-ninth. At the time, um, our coronavirus update, we had none. As of last Tuesday, we had one staff non-vaccinated test positive, we went through the building, tested everybody. We had a vaccinated resident and a booster shy of the two weeks by four days, test positive. So, um, we tested last Friday, everybody's been negative, we tested today. So, we're in a modified yellow, which allows residents to come out to the dining room for communal dining with barriers in between. Um, CDC changed their rules on visitation, so even if we have COVID in the building, visits are allowed. So, we just kind of, um, put something on the front door to make sure people are aware if we do have a positive case in the building. Uh, we have everybody that is non-vaccinated or chose not to, the board has approved exemptions accordingly. Um, there will have to be two added to the next meeting for medical ones, they took dose one but chose not to take dose two. Um, and CDC is kind of with the Attorney General, making some lawsuits at this time, things are a little bit on hold on that. But we did end up having three that chose to get the vaccination at the end, and I think I have eleven that have an exemption of some type. Um, all right, we've hired a activities director, it's been a year, so that individual's been, um, just with us for a couple weeks. Yesterday, a new dietary manager started. Um, that's basically what we have going on, besides my contract was up for discussion. You have it, I believe, in your packet according to Brussels Secretary, and there's just been the one change in there for percentage.
What was that percentage change?
It went to a four percent increase. Everything else stayed the same in it.
So, I need a motion to approve the new Mayor's Administrator Contract for a four percent increase.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any further discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And you said, uh, motion carries three to one?
I just need to sign.
Do you have the, to sign tonight or just in order?
Uh, you can sign it tonight, just drop it off or something, be fine, I don't have a copy of it yet, so the board will have to sign it too, or whichever way.
I don't know if you have it.
I do, but they also have someone for the manor needs to sign it as well, so.
I thought she was in there. She's here if you want to, if you have it. Julie or Kim's in the back, so.
Okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, can you sign it later, or you stick it around for a little while?
Well, that's not too long, but.
No, I just.
You can stop in tomorrow.
Yeah. That's, yeah, just as soon or the better, that way. Yeah, thank you for. Okay, hi, good evening.
Good evening. The, uh.
How was your New Years?
Cold.
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, nobody was out, right?
The month of December was really a good month for law enforcement. Nothing really major happened, I think there was a lot of flu and colds and holidays and, so it was, I feel pretty uneventful for us. So, there really isn't a whole lot to talk about. We have, you know, our regular Health and Human Service calls, traffic stops, but nothing that had a great big arrest or anything, so. Any questions?
Yeah, is there anything happening on any nuisance properties, Jerry?
Yes, I'm, we're gonna be talking with Mr. Curtis here on our pass.
The new guy on track. He hasn't, he hasn't been able to come up, I've got a packet assembled. I'm gonna try and meet with the police tomorrow and approve the packet and just mail it to him, tell him to get moving.
And we're planning on setting up a meeting with him and going through it real quick and go from there. And we are planning on having a health board meeting this.
Yeah, hopefully.
End of the month, hopefully.
We'll have to smooth out this process of getting it done and getting it to him, this first one's just been a little ragged.
Yeah.
The holiday and all.
Sounds good.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Economic Development, Susan?
Um, community building update real quick, donations for that project continue to come in. We did receive some very nice ones in, in December, thank people trying to meet Uncle Sam there. Um, we have received contact from area utility companies to apply for some of their grant programs, so that was nice. Um, and the steering committee's gonna meet Thursday night, uh, we're gonna put together a targeted fundraising campaign with NCF staff. Um, and there's a construction company that has offered help as well. They've, um, worked with the Summerland project and kind of built that whole, uh, fundraising campaign out, so, um, they'd like to help. You know what that means, they also want the contract, so, we're not there yet. Um, on the four-plex project, we're still waiting for DED to release that competitive grant to help us, um, put more funding into that project, so it's not upside down anymore, but the investor remains committed, so that's good, um, he's still hanging in there. On our DTR, businesses are still working on their projects, a few have been completed, um, others are waiting for round two. The delay there is, I guess, NINAD, they haven't really, the resolution and amendment that you guys passed last month, they haven't filed with the state yet, so we're in limbo until they do that. So, um, it's unfortunate, 'cause we have about six or seven people waiting for round two. Um, on the Rural Innovation Challenge Place Making Grant, Jeremy, I talked to Lowell today, he wanted me to let you know that Planview will be first to be finished, he'll be reaching out to you soon, and he's hoping that you've got some feedback from the zoning and planning committee, so they can add the updates to the plan. Um, new projects, working on an electric charging station for Highway twenty. Um, looking at locations for that. Um, on LB eight forty, we're working with four business owners right now, we're doing business plans, pro formas, they're looking to open their businesses by late summer twenty twenty-two. I can tell you the hardware store will be a Do-It-Best, that is the, uh, chain. Um, there'll be a flower shop, coffee shop, bakery, and there's also a tractor-truck repair and trucking company coming. Um, for the Chamber of Commerce, clown days is kind of my portion of it, or the, the carnival portion of it. Um, we were able to book a three-day mechanical carnival, so we won't have the inflatables this year, and that's the River, River City Carnivals, they gave us a great deal. And I booked the fireworks show today, and, um, the chamber had a meeting last night, and they, a couple changes. Um, no community barbecue like we have had in the past, we're gonna go with food trucks. So, I'm gonna book three or four food trucks for that. Um, the chamber also booked the Dylan Gage Band for Saturday night, so that's a street dance that'll happen downtown. Um, and they have the cornhole tournament Friday night, and then sand volleyball Saturday morning. And we'll have food trucks for both of those events as well, so, and then they're working on a bull ride, but I'm not on that committee, so I can't tell you too much about it, but, um, looks like it'll be a busy three-day weekend and lots of new things, so hopefully everybody, this is the year where we're gonna try some new things, see what sticks, so. Any questions?
Is there any information on the hardware store?
Um, it is, will be in the Watson Building along Highway twenty, so you'll see some improvements happening there. Um, the Al Raji owns the building, not willing to sell it yet, so it's on a three-year lease. Um, and the Do-It-Best chain, um, Jeremy's familiar with them, they had them out in Burwell, and he actually, I, I know what the logo looks, but I don't know much about it, but.
They're a nice store, they're pretty full.
A lot of selection. Um, local owner, really committed, um, don't wanna say too much about who and what and everything just yet, but we can tell you just that little bit.
Awesome.
So, um, they're hoping to be open by June. A lot of that's gonna depend on, um, can they get fixtures, can they, you know, there's a, there's a holdup in a lot of that supply chain right now, so. But they, they plan to carry all the things that we want, so.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, did you tell him?
The only thing I had not on the list was the business of reviewing the police files, and we'll be doing that, but otherwise, we've got a couple things coming up. Excuse me.
All right. Number six, number six, Mayor's appointments, Tree Board, two-year term, Larry Peterson and Jason Smith, those are both renewals, they're agreed to serve another term, and Jason also said to thank you for the clown cash.
Motion, right?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve Larry Peterson and Jason Smith to the Tree Board for two-year term?
Second? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Park Board, Amy Dummer has agreed to serve another term?
Make a motion to approve Amy Dummer as the Park Board for two-year term?
Second.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Handyman, I don't remember if Trudy Bedett was an original member, but she's served a long time, and she is asked to step off, and one of our newest citizens in town, Jody, has agreed to graciously fill that opening with your blessing.
Motion to approve Julie Born for the Handyman Board?
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Uh, Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, number seven, discussion action Keno grant post-prom, one thousand dollars. Is the balance on here the?
As of the end of December.
Okay. Fifty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars, forty-five cents, five nine, six two eight, four five. So, thank you for whoever's paying Keno, 'cause it was down to like fourteen thousand a couple years ago as well. So.
Hi.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Alyssa Fromm, I'm one of the, uh, junior senior parents, um, on the post-prom committee. Um, as you know, the post-prom committee is kind of a revolving door of, uh, junior senior parents. Um, the, it's, you know, not necessarily a school-related organization, other than that it's, you know, for an activity that's at school. Um, we are asking for, um, a thousand dollars to help pay for our entertainment this year that we've booked, um, a hypnotist slash magician, he's going to perform for an hour and twenty minutes, I think. Um, that'll just kind of help us, uh, get some extended time in there for those kids to keep them in a safe, um, environment, keep them, um, having a little bit of fun, and, you know, um, some extra activities that we can do. Um, we have done some fundraising throughout the, the school year so far, we've done, um, Krispy Kreme donut sales, you might have been able to partake in that. Um, we've done the, uh, dueling pianos at Mary's, that was a lot of fun. Um, we've done a blanket sales, and we have had a walking taco fundraiser at school at the basketball game last week, and we have a couple more, um, fundraisers yet to come before, um, prom at the end of March. So, um, I guess, do you have any questions or any concerns, or?
I really don't.
Okay.
When we set it up, Keno was for the kids and the communities.
Thanks for coming out, uh, I make a motion to approve the Keno grant for one thousand dollars for Planview post-prom.
Second? Second? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, number eight, discussion action, appointment of city engineer and city street superintendent. City engineer Miller and Associates, city street superintendent Reed Miller, license, uh, S five one four, class A. And this is an annual thing, correct?
Make a motion to approve the city engineer Miller and Associates. And if I can make it same motion, I'll make same motion, city super, street superintendent Reed Miller.
I'll second that.
Second? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion action zoning regulation of commercial use types, specifically small box discount stores, ordinance number nine seven two on the third reading.
Pass ordinance nine seven two.
Second? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Nay.
Pam?
Nay.
Tyler?
Aye.
Myself, I, motion passes three to two on the third reading. Number ten, discussion action, resolution number six four seven, creation of street improvement projects twenty, twenty-one dash one through twenty twenty-one dash nine.
And this is pretty much a resolution that says that we did all the hearings and everything, the processes through there, so, this has nothing to do with moving forward with bidding, so this is the next step in line.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution six forty-seven, creation of street improvement project.
Second? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven, discussion action, resolution number six four eight, update authorized signups for city of Planview bank accounts.
I added a couple new ones in the past couple years, and so, just so it's current, I thought I'd, every year, probably just do the same case and drop one or whatever, that bank has a current copy of who was authorized to sign banks on what account.
Good idea, there would be a bit of a change with it. Motion to pass, resolution six forty-eight.
Second? 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 Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
I'll say.
Motion passes three to zero. Number twelve, discussion action, ordinance number nine seven four, creation of right-of-way and public street on Lincoln Avenue. We're moving forward, Doc Earl.
So, this, yeah, this is actually, if, if we're interested or if we're not, currently, that is not a public street, it is owned by the city, it is all one parcel. Um, if we choose to move forward, obviously, this will be the first step we have to take to make it a public street, so we can pave it. Um, we can go through this, make it a public street, we still don't have to pave it, it just, uh, makes it actionable right-of-way, so we can drive through, and then we won't be, uh, going out for bids on it yet, because if we do, we need to talk to our bond agent, which I did, and he'll have stuff ready for us for next month to do the next step, if you guys so choose.
Really doesn't change the situation much, the city owned the dirt.
Yeah.
The city will still own the dirt, but the ordinance would say you're going to dedicate it as a street and make it all into one big chunk with Lincoln Avenue. And it's considerably simpler this way than having to do a full platoon dedication, the engineer did it, dedication. The engineers had written back to Jeremy and said they would do that, but seemed to them to be overkill. Where the city owns it, I think you have the power to just designate it, a chunk of it as a street. I attached their little survey, that's clear enough, I believe. And you're just gonna say from here forward, you'll treat that as a street, make it part of Lincoln, Lincoln Avenue. This thing wants a swimming pass, needs to go to Pierce, according to. This thing, once assuming passed, needs to go to Pierce, of course, so they'll fix the maps and straighten it all out down there.
Also have a milar done.
Yeah.
We will have to think about probably the school for closing streets and things like that in the future, so.
Motion to pass ordinance nine-seven-four.
I'll say that motion.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam? Ordinance number nine-seven-four passes on first reading.
Pass third or second, third readings?
I'll say that motion.
Second. Okay. Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
At ordinance number nine-seven-four passes on second and third readings. Number thirteen, discussion action, requesting bids for paving of Lincoln Avenue right-of-way and public street.
Nope.
Nope, not doing that. Number fourteen, discussion action, requesting bids for street improvement projects twenty-twenty-one dash one through twenty-twenty-one dash nine.
So this is where you guys do choose. Obviously, six street didn't want to go forward, so we have to at least prove that one, otherwise you have the option for all the other ones to go up for bids or not.
No, they're just bids, so.
What's that?
They're just bids.
They are. You do not have to accept any bids coming.
You have to each individual.
You can run a slate. What, you can say which ones you want. If you want them all, it's entirely up to you.
I'll make a motion to request bids for street improvement projects one through nine.
I'll second. Second. Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Nay.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one, and then number fifteen, we'll take.
They're both here?
They're ready here?
Yep. Yeah, they're all right with it. Yeah, so what happened is they came forward, obviously, and then we've had some changes come along. The chambers gotten together and they've kind of collaborated with both of them, so their licenses and everything have changed a little bit, so if we could dis table all these till next month. And then, though, we'll be here next month instead too to speak about the.
Oh, partial.
Yep, they say you can make it this month, so.
No problem.
Motion to table it for next month?
Yeah. Okay, number sixteen, castle comments, Bob? Pam? Tyler?
No, just. We've got a election coming up for this next term, so please encourage other people and people next to you. Be nice to, uh, any, anybody with more experience, always appreciated. So that's all the comment I got.
Brian?
Nope.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
Close, same side? We are adjourned?